All right, we're about to reconvene our Board of Selectmen meeting. I call it to order again. Again, that's the second time. We've done the Pledge of Allegiance one time, and that's adequate. And next on the agenda, item two, announcements. Millville Rabies Clinic will be Saturday, May 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the police station. There's a fee of $115 per pet. Cats from the hours of 9:00 to 10:00, and dogs, hours 10:00 to noon. The annual town meeting will commence on Monday, May 14th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at the Millville Elementary School. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes for the April 17th meeting. Is there any discussion regarding the...
I don't have any.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of Tuesday, April 17th, at 7:00 p.m.
Second?
No.
First.
I thought he made a motion.
No, he's looking for the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for April 17th meeting.
There is no opposition. I had a vote. Halt, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Item four, Departments and Board. We're announcing that the Fire Department, in conjunction with the American Red Cross, will be providing free smoke alarm or conducting a free smoke alarm program to be installed on June 23rd. And those eligible to take advantage of that service, you have to own your own home. Your home was built before 1975. And your current smoke alarms are 10 years or older. So I'm just curious, could you do two out of three? Or are all three applicable? Highway engineering report for Albert Drive, partial. We'd be looking for a vote tonight to vote to lay out and accept Albert Drive, partial, as a public way. Is our highway supervisor here?
He's not. He's at the planning board, public hearing. He will be coming, so you can do one of two things. You could revisit this a little bit later on in the agenda. And if he doesn't, I'll be prepared to address what's in the engineering report and to look at laying out the road and voting to accept it, whatever the pleasure of the board.
Are there any questions regarding...
I think we can just take it later in the meeting. If he can make it back, then we'll do it then.
Okay.
Rerange the agenda.
That sounds good.
Public forum. Three-minute, if anyone wished a three-minute limit.
I just have an announcement. The Lion's Eye Mobile will be at the Senior Center on May 15th, from 10:00 to 2:00. So people of any age can come and have an eye exam for free.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Anyone else here, none, we'll move on. This happened, actually, last Thursday, but we received correspondence regarding Massachusetts Municipal Month, which occurred on May 3rd. M-I-I-A, the insurance, the renewal proposal, property liability, and workers' compensation. Happy to announce that a town administrator successfully negotiated with MIA, and the town will enjoy a 7.2 percent decrease in rates. The third item in correspondence, we're in receipt of yearly operating plan to address vegetation along rail lines. And the herbicide, the application of herbicides will occur along the Providence rail line between the period of June 12th and June 26th. Questions from the board?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'll be posting that again under the website for both Board of Health and on the main, in case anybody wants to inquire.
The new business, next is, next item is joint pole petition. We'll be looking for a vote tonight to approve the relocation of Pole 60-84 on Chestnut Hill The information is in your packet regarding, from the Massachusetts Electric Company Horizon, and that's Pole 60-84. I'll entertain a motion to approve the relocation of Pole 60-84 on Chestnut Hill Road, just by Thayer Street. It enters at Thayer Street. Is there any discussion? Hear a motion.
So moved.
Hear a second.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have that for signatures a little bit later, and the town clerk will come and certify it tonight.
Yeah. I believe on that application as well, the clerk, the secretary of this board...
Right.
...acquired the signature as well. Okay, here's the, here's the big one. We're gonna vote on a revised budget or an override request, and a vote, I'll be looking for a vote to set a date and post an election, set the date for a post-election warrant. I'll entertain discussion from members of the board. I'll make the motion.
No, that's okay. I think, I think FinCom's been sitting here for this piece of the discussion. I've listened to their budgets, their proposals of the override and no override. I'm not in 100% agreement with the budgets, but I think the enormity of the deficit is such that it has been reduced from the original numbers. My thought process was to come to the table and to cut, but when you cut, there's only so far you can cut before you start hurting the process of how a town runs, and that's my concern. I feel that our obligation is to keep this town running, to keep it viable, in the sense that we're collecting our taxes, we're running the towns with the essentials, and to do so, I do think that we do have to go back to the townspeople and say, this is what we need, and we need everybody's input on that. I think the Finance Committee made it clear.
Justin has made it clear.
The numbers that we've been looking at, and I've been looking at the budget for longer than the meeting tonight, I've had these numbers and was looking at them because I asked for them from my chair, and I've been looking at them. I had some questions I stopped in today. I had those questions answered by Mrs. Callahan, and I think if we didn't, it would be a gross negligence of our part in running this town and saying what we need and what we don't need. So I would make a motion to set a date to post an election warrant for override.
Do they propose budget?
For the proposed budget. Yes.
Thank you. We hear a second.
Actually, I have a couple of questions first.
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to FinCom. You guys worked really, really hard. I got to witness several of those hours, but you guys did a great job. I know it wasn't easy, you made a lot of tough choices, so thank you guys for doing what you do. Obviously, there's two different numbers here. They're both negative, a lot less negative than our first round that we saw come out. I have a couple of concerns, so I'm just gonna start in some sort of random order here. At the bottom line, on the non-override budget, we're still at $221,000, so we're not in balance. But my question is more longer term, in the next year or two. Has anybody done any projections on how negative we're gonna go in year two if we sustain the same tax rate or the same increases we have been doing over the last year or two and the same increases in expenses? I don't know if anybody's done any projections on either the non-override or override budget.
So largely, the projections don't change from where we started, what we've been looking at over the last several months. I mean, the only real large variable costs in there are trash and the school. I mean, those make up the largest cost to the overall budget as a whole.
Yeah.
On trash and recycling, the costs are relatively well-managed and easy to predict. You know, it's based on volume, basically.
Right.
And whereas the overall town volume of trash stays relatively the same, those costs are easy. However, neither of the budgets as it stands right now, mass trash and recycling.
Right, I was just gonna say.
So that leaves the school budget. And so we have the school budget at 2% right now. I mean, it's really hard to say what a projection would look like, as we don't know, you know, where the school might come in in next year, or two years, or three years from now. On the town side, I mean, again, the town side, even up to this point, doesn't, does not grow very quickly, you know, somewhere between, you know, 1% and 2% on average. So it really just boiled down to, you know, where the school and the school committee projects that they would be in the next several years.
So that brings me to my second point. Seeing the school budget at that percentage has me very concerned. I don't know, is that a realistic number? Is that a number that we think is going to actually happen? Or I just need a little more background on where that number is being pulled from.
Sure. I think we have had some discussions in the Finance Committee deliberations when we were cutting the budget, that there had been movement and actually a vote over in the neighboring town of Blackstone by their Board of Selectmen, not their Finance Committee. I think they have a public hearing this evening, but there's a strong indication that both those boards will be concurrent with a 3% increase. That's over the supplemental that was done last year. So that was a unified stand that they were starting to take, and so the Finance Committee listened to that and originally had it at 3%, but then noticed at the bottom we were still out of balance and said, you know, we were out of balance with zero. And I think that's what I was trying to explain even before, that originally that 18%, I, you know, my recommendation on town meeting floor was for a negative nine, because we just don't have that money. We're upside down that severely. So there is a 3% that has been indicated on that side, and so I think we understand the process, that regardless of what we do at our town meeting, the town of Blackstone may vote a different number. So originally, we were trying to stay 3%, but I think the Finance Committee came back the second night of deliberations and then reduced that again because we're still severely upside down. So it's all in a matter of what you can have and what you can spend, and without an override, you can't spend anything.
Right.
So is it realistic? What's more realistic, and we've been saying that, is if you don't have a balanced budget, you know, the state is not gonna accept that, you know? So it's not like, we have an example of which we're following. We're a bit of a canary in a coalmine. The Department of Revenue has said that, that our, our whole problem is purely a revenue shortfall by not having adjusted the tax rate over a period of time, and because expenses have now outpaced. So, you know, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, there's strong indications that we have to start at something that allows us not to, you know, completely go overboard with like a $1.8 million override, but to come back to the townspeople with something. We're all gonna, you know, suffer reductions. We have, even going into this year, been putting things on the table, and you understand how the Finance Committee came up with those cuts. So I think 2% is realistic. I think 3% is realistic. I think that's what it will come in, but we still don't have the money.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I understand. I just don't know how much of a moving target that 2%...
Can I...
Yeah, go ahead, you can do that. It just makes me concerned.
I actually watched the Selectmen's meeting, the Blackstone Selectmen's meeting, after our Wednesday's meeting, so it got me to about 1:30 in the morning. And at the point where they were discussing the school number, I took what they were proposing, I took what their total number is, I double-checked some figures with Justin and with Brian Pacheco as to what their last year's debt number was, because they included the debt in their total number. I backed out all the figures, and then I converted that to Millville numbers, and that's how we got that number.
Okay.
So, so it wasn't a speculative shot in the dark. It was based on what the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone voted at their meeting to give the school with regards to the budget they were presenting to their Finance Committee. This number is exactly concurrent with that.
Okay, but it still can move.
There's always that possibility if something votes different at the Blackstone meeting, or, but yes.
The final word, really, is in the hands of the townspeople, annual town meeting.
Right. Right, but when you go from 18 to 2, I just wanna see whether realism came into it, and it just caught my attention, so. And then another item, trash. I know we've had discussions about trash many times. My concern with the trash is, I know we had a contract, but Jen, I know you talked about not, the contract wasn't written under the laws that we have in town now.
Well, it, there are two things. This happened prior to my becoming a town administrator. When the initial trash override and called it, even though you can earmark that that was what the intent was, is to create that service, when you go back and you look at the initial agreements, there were two. There was one with Allied Ways, and one with Wheeler Brader. And one, they originally both sat for three years, and what it looks like and appears that, at least the Chairman of the Board of Health may have signed on to a more multi-year. And as far as both Justin and I know, in terms of procurement, and this board knows, that when you enter into multi-year contracts, it typically has to go before the town meeting, especially if it's not being executed by the Board of Selectmen. So my contention right now is, we have both of the contracts in with Town Council. There, to my knowledge, I have not come across any town meeting article that asks the townspeople to enter into a multi-year agreement. So one of the things we would be looking at is executing, or exec, not executing, excuse me, exiting, if, and what that will look like. So they have that now, they're looking through all the information. I expect an answer shortly, definitely before town meeting, and so that this board will also be able to make that decision. But as far as we know, that it would not hold.
Okay. All right.
I have one quick question. So as it stands now, we'd be looking for a $100, $1 million override, and previously it was 100, $1,800,000. My question is, the tax rate would have gone, if the previous override had passed, would be going up $4 per thousand. If this override goes through, the tax rate would only be going up $1, or how does that work out?
So for FY '19, yeah, so I believe originally, the original upfront funding, when we were discussing the estimates previously, was about $1 million in year one.
1.1.
Yeah, 1.1, which equated out to, it brought the tax rate to $20 and some change. The upfront loaded cost for this, if this went through, would be this number right here, $332,000, which would be $1.26.
I have another question.
I don't think you've got a second.
I have another question. I just noticed on the Fire Department, there was a reduction between non-override and override budget of about $25,000 or so, and I know it came out of the replacement equipment. Can you remind me what that was? Did you, was that moved to another budget, or did it get pulled?
On the police or the fire?
Fire, fire.
Doc, eliminated the replacement vehicle.
Oh, that's...
Fire capital replacement vehicle.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to let the board know, some of you I've been in touch with today and some I haven't been able to, but I think that the townspeople have been concerned about the town's inability to structure and rely upon a multi-year plan from the school district, and we know what our budget deficit looks like at this time. And today, in speaking long-term with the Division of Local Services, I was informed today that they are looking to put together, because I think it's prudent at this point, the town has struggled for 12 years trying to both educate the public about the structural deficit that exists and the school needs that also need to be addressed, and we've not been successful in balancing that out. And it's always led to a yearly drawdown of our reserves, to the point where now the structural deficit is so large that we can't sustain even putting forward a balanced budget. So the state's aware of that. They have reached out today and have wanted this board to know that they're going to be looking for a joint two-town meeting along with the regional school district, looking for possibility via May 22nd or May 23rd, as a way of trying to actually look at, trying to put together some kind of plan. That would be a general outcome, I think, of this. But it's very hopeful. I think we've been waiting for the state to try to act as a partner, to help, you know, bridge this communication. I think, you know, one of the things that, in all fairness to the regional school district, they have, they have an agreement, and they fall under an agency, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We fall under a different agency, the Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue. And so part of it is, the state, you know, typically would like a community to try to resolve their own financial issues. But I think what this speaks to is that the state also doesn't want to see this community fail. None of us do. And by looking at both of these budgets, that's a distinct reality without an override. This doesn't replace the need for an override. I think some people have said, let the state come in. I can tell you unequivocally, as a, being a canary in a coalmine, the state's not interested in coming into a community that's already not willing to pay its normal obligations. But they don't loan money to a community that can't pay it back. And right now, with the deficit we have, we know we can't do that. So I think it's a hopeful sign of, I don't have an actual which date and which time it will be, but they're going to be reaching out to both Blackstone and the regional school district. So I say this to you as you're trying to make a very important decision for this town going forward. I think people have said, why can't we get into the same room and hammer this out? I think we've tried that. We've had a three-year agreement in terms of a financial projected budget from the school. That didn't hold up for us this year, and I think what we need to do is make sure everybody understands what each other's needs are, and what can we realistically afford, not just for the town of Millville, but also for the town in Blackstone. I think at the end of the day, we want all, all three areas to succeed. So I think that's really positive news.
And that's tentatively scheduled for the 22nd or the 23rd?
Or the 23rd.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'm setting a date for the override. I need a second. I'll second that motion. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of words before my vote. I think it's fairly clear that this town will not survive if we do not do something. And I understand that, and I appreciate every one of your votes here tonight, all the work that the Finance Committee's done, along with our town administrator and town accountant. A couple of things I've learned recently, and that I want to share with you all, not just this board, but the town, that it's not always a good idea to speak prematurely. But even more importantly, we all must share pertinent information in a timely manner, when necessary, to avoid any miscommunication between board members, our town administrator, our accountant, or any other boards, as well as the town itself. So with that, I stick to my word and vote nay.
The portion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the board to consider a couple possible dates into the future. You know, there will be a warrant posting, number of days, the town clerk, I believe, knows that it's at least maybe 35 days or something like that. So if we were to look to actually do a date, we'd have to be looking into the month of June for setting an actual date. I do want you to be aware that the town clerk is not available on June 21st, June 26th, and June 27th.
So, it looks like possibly June twenty-second. He's not here the twenty-first.
Do we want to keep the vote to a Monday, like the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth?
Need forty-five days.
I want to make sure of that. I was told thirty-five, and then I was told, so, our town clerk is going to be here in a little bit, we can do one of two things, we can wait and refrain and make sure. But, I do want you to know that we'd have to keep it away from, well, one's a Thursday, and the other two dates were a Tuesday and a Wednesday in the final week. So, if we do back counting, you know, we'll be able to find out. And, as far as I know, it's just the full counting of the weeks, so it's not.
It's not business days.
The business days, as far as I know.
And the election would be at the elementary school?
No. No. The church? Church. Well, I, I do want to say that our town clerk has been talking about that, one of the things, we've been putting in money to have to have it at the church. The church was only a temporary measure, because we couldn't go from the town hall when we were evacuated, we had no place. Well, I understand, but a lot of communities, we're also paying a cleanup fee and all of that, at that particular point. I do want you to know, many communities hold their elections in schools, and because they are municipal buildings, not a church kind of thing, yeah. Well, I'm, it's not.
So, so many, many schools in Rhode Island do do that, but they have to cancel school to do that, and we would still be in school in the all of them.
No, actually.
No, some schools do remain.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
My town has had them in schools ever, and they don't cancel it. They, their police officers.
Just for reference, because I was the person who asked for it to be changed from the old town hall to the church, and it was because people were driving in and driving out, because there was no parking. So, at the time, we, we moved it to the church because of the parking, the handicapped accessibility, and things of that sort. Now, if we move our polling location, we have to send out notification to all of the townspeople, so that's going to cost us money. So, I don't know what that costs versus the cleanup, and if we change it again, so, I'm of a thought of keeping it where it is, because if we're going to pay money for cleanup, we're going to have to pay money to notify all the residents. And those are logistics that we would need to work out with the school also. So, I mean, for this, for the sake of this one, I think we just need to keep it status quo. Don't confuse people showing up at the church when they should be at the school, or at the, or here, or there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they would notify, that's one of the clerk has to do that at least twenty days.
Yeah, so, I prefer to keep it where it is, but, I mean, for future, if that's a future discussion, that's different, but for this, I think we need just to keep it as we, as we have.
Mr. Wood?
Either is fine with me, but as long as we know the parking capacity at Millville Elementary while school is in session, I think that might be an issue.
Well, when you look at where past, you know, votes were, it's pretty consistent with what you have done for previous overrides, and it, the polls are open for the entire, you know, twelve hours.
Twelve hours.
So, so that's another piece of it.
And I think the part with the school that comes into play is, is the parking, so there is no real handicap parking by the back, because I'm assuming it would be in the gymnasium, because they wouldn't be going through the front door, you'd probably be at the gym, there's no really handicap parking there. You also are dealing with children having lunch, not, they'll still be in school the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, so, but you'll also have to deal with recess and children outside, and walking across, and I, I just think, I think, we just need to keep it.
The church?
Keep it as it is. I know it's not, there's other, I know there's other topics.
Probably not optimal.
I know there's other items, but for this one.
And I just would request that people coming to the polls know exactly what they're voting for. I mean, obviously, it's their own responsibility to know, but I want it to be very, very clear, if you vote yes, you're still losing services. It's just giving people a second chance to vote on a lower override amount. It doesn't mean you're going to get all the services you had before, so I just want people to be very well-educated and informed, and know what they're voting on.
But, it does allow to keep a bare minimum for, say, the library, the senior center, at least to keep the doors open. But, they're still going to feel it, it's not.
Right, and I just want to make sure that's clear, and people see, and hopefully they take a look through the two budgets and make a good decision for themselves.
So, do we have a preferred date, or are we going to wait till Brian gets coming?
We wait, we'll ask her what works out, I'd hate to, you know, put it, and when she comes in, we'll ask, but it will be towards the end of June.
We'll just table that till later in the meeting.
This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Lali to the microphone. Earlier, in the department's, topic was an engineering report from Albert Drive, and vote by this board to lay out and accept Albert Drive partial as a public way. Would you give your input, sir?
Yes, Carriage Estates Two, as you can see in the reports, started back in two thousand five, fast forwarding to last fall, the developer tried to persevere and have, get his road accepted. He fell short by doing his final paving, which he chose himself to repave the entire development. As you could see in the first report from the engineer, they only recommended that he had to mill and overlay certain sections, but the developer found it more feasible and going to be better long-term for the town to do the entire road. So, at that time, the milling of the sections that needed to be done were done, the fiber crack, crack filling were done, and the road was overlaid, but unfortunately, it wasn't done in time for the inspection last fall, so, the road sat again through another winter under the developments, developers' control. All the drainage that was approved last fall under the engineering report was re-inspected and had held up again through another winter. So, we came into this spring where the road was cleaned, the drains were cleaned again, and he then again, under my recommendation, there was what was called a cold joint down the center of the road, from the paver going one way and then going back the other, he even went to the next level and had that done with the fiber crack filler, which is mass DOT spec. So, it was my recommendation at this time that Carriage Estates Two go forward for acceptance. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept Albert Drive Carriage State Partial.
I think you need two, two votes, one to vote to lay out the road, and then one vote to accept it as a public way.
Yep.
So, if any of you want to look at it, we do have a mile hour, I can send it around or.
That's only that one portion of the road, right?
Yeah. It's a partial.
Correct.
I'm glad he could get it done.
Yeah.
I know the residents up there will be happy, on the lower end of that side of the development, yep. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to lay out, as a public way, the following road, Albert Drive, partial, as shown in the street acceptance plans for Albert Drive, partial, dated October tenth, two thousand seventeen, prepared by Mark and Nyberg Associates Incorporated, as a public way in the town of Millville. A copy of the street acceptance plan of this vote shall be filed with the town clerk, with the town clerk's office.
Second.
Rule?
Hi.
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 You name it, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you.
Old business. No explaining.
Annual, the warrant.
Yeah.
Vote. So, do we want to do the titles and accept them all and hold, or do we want to do one by one?
Um, the first.
The first.
So, we can hold anything we have questions on?
We'll vote on all the ones that we agree on, and then if we have back in question, then vote individually on any held items. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Article one, monetary increases. Article two, those prior fiscal, bills of prior fiscal year. Article three, snow and ice deficit. Article four, Highway Department, Chapter ninety. Article five, cable license fees. Article six, fund other post-employment benefits. Article seven, capital stabilization fund. Article eight, matching grant stabilization fund. Article nine, general stabilization fund. Article ten, fiscal year budget. Article eleven, dedication of, this one, I'll read. To see if the town will vote to approve the naming of the courtyard at the Millville Elementary School in honor of Mr. Everett B. Campbell, is voted by the Blackstone-Millville Regional School Committee, or taking any other action there, submitted by the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District Committee. This article seeks to formally name Millville Elementary School Courtyard after Mr. Everett B. Campbell. Mr. Campbell served the school district with distinction for over thirty years, including as superintendent of schools. Article twelve, compensated absences. Article thirteen, school projects.
Capital school projects.
Capital school projects. Article fourteen, storage containers. To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by adding a new section, Article five, Section one hundred dash five zero six, storage containers providing as follows. There shall be no permit or indefinite keeping of a storage container for the storage of personal property in any residential zone. The building inspector may issue a permit for a storage container in a residential zone, provided it will not exceed seventeen hundred cubic feet, and is, is not maintained for more than ninety days, and provided that such container is required for the storage of personal property and/or construction materials and equipment, and is necessary as a result of ongoing construction of the property, which is being undertaken in accordance with a lawfully issued building permit. To the extent feasible, such storage containers shall be stored so as not to be visible, visible from any public way. Such storage containers shall be removed from the property upon the earlier of one cessation of construction work on pro, on the property for any ten consecutive day period. Two, final sign-off of the building permit, and three, ninety days following issuance of the building permit permitting such construction. Storage containers may be permitted in the commercial business district upon the issuance of a permit by the building inspector upon such conditions and restrictions as the building inspector deems appropriate. The term "storage condition," "container" as used in this section shall mean a fully enclosed, detached, self-supporting structure of any type of construction or material, not having an in-ground foundation, electricity, plumbing, or other mechanical systems as utilized for temporary storage of any kind. Storage containers shall include but not limited to the following: any truck, the trailer portion of a tractor, trailer vehicle, storage container box, portable warehouse, box trailer, whether registered or not in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter ninety, or in accordance with the laws of any other state, submitted by the Building Commissioner and Town Administrator.
I have a question.
No, you can go.
So, I have a question on this, if you're ready for a question. What is the definition, oh, I see an in-ground foundation, so my shed, for example.
The shed's fine.
It's fine, okay, so, because I don't know what the definition of an in-ground foundation is.
And that's permanent.
Okay.
These are like roll-off containers.
It's not like the Conex boxes, mini pods and stuff like that.
The planning board just met along with the building commissioner.
Do you want to come through?
Yeah, please.
I just don't sure, because it didn't make sense.
Planning board just had a public hearing on these articles, along with the building commissioner, and it was at length discussion to, at our request to strike this article, along with the building commissioner until a future date with some different literature, different wording.
I think one of the things that the building commissioner, I had spoken to him earlier, is that as this language was crafted by town council, you know, there was a notion that he didn't want any storage containers in residential districts at all, not even with a permit, because, you know, most communities don't have that, and that even for commercial district, it was another thing that has cropped up to be problematic. So, I think this would mean more responsibility of him having to evaluate whether a special permit was needed and the like, so I think part of it was, are we going to now draft regulations afterwards, or are we just going to do a clear-cut prohibition? So, I said that, you know, had he let it go forward, he could have changed the motion on town meeting floor to reflect what they wanted, so, I would just, you know, even if the language was changed, and he could be able to defend that, I think that would be helpful, but, you know, it's up to this board, how they want to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, with that said, I know there's concern for townspeople about their sheds, and, again, what is an in-ground foundation, so, I feel until better wording comes about or is used, it may be prudent to strike this article.
Well, we can't strike anything, because it's all there, it has to be town meeting.
It can be, well, it can be held and struck at, on the town meeting floor.
So, we can hold this, and then we can vote on this as a zero five or four one, or whatever, whatever the vote is, and then on town floor, if they have that information, not just striking it, but if they have new language.
Right.
Then they can just amend what's here to reflect. So, I think based on this language and the concerns that you have, I think that's differently, so, why don't we hold Article fourteen for a separate vote?
Does this include, like, say someone's doing a remodeling, and it's just dumpstered, like, for garbage and whatnot, does that include that?
No, these are storage containers where they have doors, they roll off, they're usually large metal ones.
Okay.
They also include people who have had, like, freezer containers that sit on the back of trucks, they take those off, and they have a door, and they wind up using that.
There's even a company, Pods, they deliver the pod to your house, you load it all up, and then they come and get it. There's a house in Oxbridge that had one on one-twenty-two for about three years, and they're fine now.
We now have people with, you know, major tractor trailers also parking them in residential districts, and that's a problem. We've had complaints of people. So, again, from an enforcement perspective, I think that is wise, what you're saying to do, and if we can come up with that language at a later date, right at town meeting, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Do you have a question about some of the language in this one?
I think that, take it up later.
We'll do that later.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
All right, so, hold fourteen.
So, finally, the only one you told is fourteen.
Fifteen.
Article fifteen, LLC disclosure, to see if the town will vote to adopt a new Section one hundred dash six zero two A of the town code as follows. Any application for a building, wiring, plumbing, gas, smoke detector, or other similar permit related to building, construction, or maintenance shall be issued to a natural person. If an application is submitted by a corporation, limited liability corporation, realty, trust, or other business entity, such application shall include the name, address, and date of birth for all principles, owners or trustees is applicable of such entity, and this is submitted by the Building Commissioner and Town Administrator.
Makes sense.
We've had an ongoing enforcement issue that has arisen, as we've had a much more aggressive building commissioner actually trying to uphold our bylaws. When we've gone out to actually issue code violations, we're finding that more and more entities, LLC and business entities, that are registered under a business entity name, when they come in and they're looking for some kind of permit application to do something, only later to follow.
We've had an ongoing enforcement issue that has arisen, as we've had a much more aggressive Building Commissioner actually trying to uphold our bylaws. When we've gone out to actually issue code violations, we're finding that more and more entities, LLC and business entities, that are registered under a business entity name, when they come in and they're looking for some kind of permit application to do something, only later to follow out of compliance or to be in violation, they're not putting down their actual name or their birth date, so when you go back to actually issue a citation or violation, the court now is requiring that it go to the right person. So, it's a way of helping us, you know, going forward. We can't help with what's already happened, but going forward, it's a good practice.
A contractor's license is not issued to a company, it's issued to a person, anyway. So, anybody listing their contractor's license on an application has to put their name with it.
Yeah, these are liability companies and realty trusts, that they don't, they haven't in the past.
Thank you.
Motion due.
No hold.
Article sixteen, Appointed Associate Planning Board Member. To see if the town will vote to amend Section one hundred dash six zero five of the town's zoning bylaws by deleting said section in its entirety and inserting in its place the following. A, there shall be one associate member of the planning board who shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve a term of one year. B, in the event of a vacancy in the position of an associate member, the position shall be filled by the appointment of the Board of Selectmen to fill the remainder of the one year. C, the chairman of the planning board may require such associate member to be in attendance at special permit proceedings and hearings, and may designate such associate member to sit on the planning board for the purpose of acting on a special permit application in the case of absence, inability to act, conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board, or in the event of a vacancy on the planning board during special permit application proceedings and hearings. In no case, however, shall more than five members in total, including the associate member acting as a planning board, take any action or any special permit. This was submitted by the Planning Board, Town Planner and Town Administrator. This article seeks to change the Associate Planning Board Member position from being an elected position to an appointed position, one on an as-needed basis. The Planning Board voted in favor of this change. It is also a change supported by the Town Planner and Town Administrator.
We had our hearing at the Planning Board this evening. We voted on the second article and the third article. We're in favor of those, but we have some wording that we'd like to add to it, which I was gonna talk to the Town Administrator about, sit down with her and go over it. But, we did approve those, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article seventeen.
The public acceptance of Albert Drive, in which we already made the motion for. So, I make a motion to accept, vote in favor, recommend Articles one through thirteen, fifteen through seventeen.
A second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye, so unanimous.
So, the next would be the storage containers. So, as written, and as a concern has been brought up, I'll vote not to recommend Article fourteen.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye, so unanimous.
So, the next would be the storage containers. So, as written, and as a concern has been brought up, I'll vote not to recommend Article fourteen.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Yeah, it was an aye vote.
Here. I have to make a note for that. Andrew, did you vote?
Yeah.
He said aye. That was an awkward look.
Is that double negative in a thing? It's just really awkward.
Mr. Chairman, we'll update the warrant with the recommendations, so that people will have that in advance of the Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight, on, number eight on the agenda, it's old business, MSBA, MES Accelerated Repair, SOI Site Visit.
The site visit. Last year, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the school had submitted a statement of interest in hopes that we could gain some future assistance through the accelerated repair program out of the Mass. School Building Authority, and we found out, because they had had such a volume of applicants, they had changed one of the criteria, and it wound up actually excluding us, even though we were very hopeful. This year, we were encouraged by the CEO of the Mass. School Building Authority to once again do it. I know I've been in discussion with the Superintendent, he did submit it. This is another follow-up. They come and look and evaluate the school, and, of course, we're really having them look at both the boiler and the storage fuel for that boiler. So, I know that you attended, you know, but then found out that they had changed the meeting date. So, neither one of us actually attended this year. Last year, we did, but we're hopeful and supportive, and, you know, obviously, the main thrust is looking at that major capital item, which we have been discussing, and the chief has been discussing with us. So, you know, that will be something for us to consider down the road. They are supposed to, from my discussions with the Chief Executive Officer of the Mass. School Building Authority, that they're looking to make these decisions before the end of May. That's what I had heard, so that might be fortuitous for us to at least consider going forward, for how, you know, we would address that if we were to be fortunate enough to be accepted into the accelerated repair. It's not an all outright, you know, grant to the community. There is, you know, definitely something that we would have to consider, but it's one vehicle to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sluggins, Paul.
I have something. You know, it's been tossed around a few times, and there's always a lot of discussion around it, and I think our board, come July, I think we need to think about an educational study committee. There are many facets to our education system within town, ranging from our, you know, our youngest K through our kids who are in high school vote programs, and our regional high school. Obviously, there's a financial issue, there's some tuition issues with other schools, there's the state level for advocating to our legislators, and on a state level for what we need in our town. There's been, over the years, question about the regional agreement and how it's, how the students are housed. So, I think there's many goals and objectives that that committee could start to look at, and I think that we need to get together people who are invested in sitting down and prioritizing what needs to be done, and looking at not just, I don't, I'm not talking about the curriculum, I'm not talking about the staffing, I'm not, I'm talking about how it affects Millville and how it affects our budget, and what we need to do to advocate for ourselves. We're starting that with the meeting with the DLS and the, yep, DC, and I think we also need to advocate for ourselves. I think we need that committee of people to set the priorities of what needs to be addressed first, and then start doing that. I think we need to get through what we, what we need to get through right now with the budget, and the DC, and the DOR, but I think come July, we'd like to see that on our agenda of what that may look like, and people who may want to serve on affairs like that. But I think we need to be ahead of ourselves, rather than someone else coming in and saying, "Oh, by the way, you know, we wanna do this," and we're not on top of it. So, I just would like something like that, if we can put that in after.
Are you suggesting that we have members on this committee from, assisted town?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, if someone, you know, has, anybody can, from any town can be appointed to any of our committees, which I did not vote for on Town Meeting Floor, but that's our bylaw, that they can. But, I think there's a wealth of knowledge out there, and, you know, we need to figure out what we're doing. We need to figure out all the aspects of our education, because there's so many, I was sitting down with goals and objectives, like, I was like, "What could they do?" And I was like, the list was quite long, because there's so many different elements of it, but I think we need to start looking at it. You know, when you have our neighboring town talk about, you know, deregilizing, you know, we don't want, we don't want that to land on our desk and have no plan or have no information. Same thing with our tuition students, you know, we need someone, we need a group of people who are gonna advocate at a legislative level to say, "You need to fix this. You need to fix the tuition for Keef and Aggie and Tri- Dry County." You know, we need, we need some, we need some work in there. We need to be fighting for ourselves outside of our borders, and I just, I wanna be prepared, because this isn't going away, we know that. So, I think after the new year, the fiscal year, I think we should take a hard look at being well-knowledgeable and advocating for our education system, for our students, and for the whole community, because it is affecting the whole community.
Thank you.
Yep.
On our, one of our agendas in the very near future, I would like to speak about the playground at Millville Elementary School, to find out why it hasn't been approved yet, or why we can't use it, or things we should be doing to be able to use that playground.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is an update on the status of the Information Technology Grant I have submitted, once again, to try to benefit this town through the Community Compact. We were precluded last year from being able to apply, but this year, it opened the doors. I'm happy to report that we have not been eliminated through the first round. Matter of fact, I had received a call to actually look at items that I had originally submitted. I had submitted a proposal that was trying to address the police fire and COA network, and, in terms of the telephone system, so that we would all be on the same network. That was one smaller item, but the other items that came to bear, once there was an assessment, was that the police station itself really needed both service and firewall, and backups and networking. We have had some evidence of compromise of our IT system in the police department, and it's woefully inadequate. There was another item for the fire department that was also submitted, as well as the senior center. So, after sort of negotiating about what the major priorities are, I anticipate we'll hear at the end of the month, but keep your fingers crossed, I think we may get a significant portion of that, but I thought it was important that you know we're still in the running, and it's always good when you can kind of compromise on the proposal you set forward. My number-one preference was to try to fix the police department issue, so hopefully that will come across, and it'll be money that will be well-spent again. There is no match for those people who are concerned about that. But the original grant proposal was for sixty thou, a little over sixty thousand dollars, and we know that if we do just the police station aspect and the telephone network upgrades, it would be at least about forty thousand, so we'll see. I'll keep you posted on that. The second item on the agenda, speaking of grant advocacy and trying to find any way that we can advocate for our needs, including our school needs, I did request, since the House budget was in session, and having been a former legislator, I did request our local legislator, Mr. Curros, to file an amendment that was not just for the public safety needs that we're trying to address in our budget, that'll cost us a hundred thousand dollars. And I also recognize that the police station had had its repeater system go down, and we were without that for a weekend, and we know that it's been a longstanding issue. I'm unfortunately going to report that that amendment was not adopted by the House, and so that was an option for us to try to get some money for that. So, better luck next time. The third item on the agenda is the Urban Land Institute. I've spoken about this, I explained that the Mass. Office for Business Development is actually moving ahead. The reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is, if you look in your packets, you will see that a technical assistance panel is something that this town could not afford to do on its own. It is going to be something that gets sponsored by the Mass. Office for Business Development. If you look in your packets, you will see a typical retainer fee and a final report that's gonna be issued, once a technical assistance panel comes through. It's somewhere valued between thirty and forty thousand, with a retainer of five thousand. We're gonna have really great planning professionals that will come to this town. I do have to actually submit this application, and the reason why I'm bringing it forward is, from what I understand, they have a group of, a town project that's coming up in May and in June. So, the thing that we have to decide is, do we want something in August, or, you know, the beginning of September? I don't think July is a really good month. So, what this entails, if you read through it, is that the town has to make a concerted commitment to outline three major areas. I told you that this evolved out of a site visit from the Mass. Office for Business Development. We went to three key areas, including the old mug pub site, the town hall, which I did inform them that just recently was voted to be able to put into the custody of the selectmen to figure out what to do next. And so, and also the land that goes along the river, along Main Street and corner of Central Street. So, those are the areas that I had showed them, but as far as outlining the three major priorities, if each one of you could get back to me about what you would like to see when I make this actual application, but the good thing is, is that we're already on their radar. It's not like we're competing with other people. They've made a commitment to do this, because we have a sponsor. So, the Mass. Office for Business Development is sponsoring us, like a grant, to actually have this panel come in to help us. Could be putting the whole RFP together, and so they do a pretty good, intense aspect to try to be able to assist the town. So, I don't know if you wanna discuss that, about when, you know, what you would prefer, you know, in terms of a month, August, or it could be the beginning of August, or we could, you know, try to do it in the month of September. I just don't wanna wait too, too long, especially because I don't want time to tick away, so, I mean, they do, you know, they actually do this whole day, and then they come and present to the boards in the early evening, and then they do a follow-up, very intensive report with very specific guidelines.
Why don't we plan for August?
August? Everybody okay with that? Okay. Then I'll try to get them to do that part of it. The next item on the agenda is the GASPY forty-five Actuarial Evaluation Report for Retiree Medical Program. You have remembered that we just discussed this in terms of OPEB, and we are still woefully under our liability numbers that we're supposed to actually have available to deal with that. So, this report did two things. One, it told us that our actual annual liability that we should be paying towards is forty thousand. We only have fifteen going into it. We never even had an item that was paying towards this. Our finance director, myself, you know, we, with the strong endorsement of the Finance Committee, have put in a number of these things where we're paying little by little. The GASPY report reported, it's different than the past ones, because unfortunately, whoever did the past one did not include retirees' spouses. So, that was something that was, why it was showing perhaps to be lower in terms of the overall liability. So, it's a good thing that we had it, and it's a good thing we had another pair of eyes look at it, because we'd still be under our liability even further, and that's not where we wanna be.
What's the date that it's set to have that paid off? Wasn't there a?
Good question.
You can get back to me, I just.
Well, when you, you mean the full three hundred and six, oh, what, a year going into? Oh, jeez. Good question.
I mean, I believe they gave us twenty years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's pretty.
Okay. That seems about right, I remember as well. I was just curious.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have every answer off the top of my head, I'm sorry about that. So, that's that. So, we have that going forward, and at least we're trying to address that liability. that liability little by little, regardless of what the budget circumstances are. And the last thing is, in your packet, you'll see an actual public meeting schedule for the Mass DOT. I put that out there because a lot of communities look at what's happening in their immediate area. We're lucky and fortunate that we finally have Main Street 122 being able to be resurfaced. That was one of those items that was on the docket for a long time. So I wanted the board to have the opportunity to look at that, and also usually online, you can go here to see what capital investment plans they are, and, and how it might impact us. There's two local ones, one in Worcester on May 16, and another one in Pittsburgh, May 31. And that would conclude my update for you today. And just with the minutes to be signed, poll relocation petition, I will ask a town clerk to come in, and we can also revisit the date, if that's all right. I'll go get her.
I just, Mrs. Kelly, I just wanted to say, I know the last few weeks have been very trying. I think it's been very trying for all of us, in trying to, to help what we believe our vision for Millville is, and our personal responsibilities. And it's, it's not always an easy situation, but I just want to commend the board, yourself, the finance committee, for staying level-headed and being respectful, and having conversations, because that's really what, what is needed. And I just want to personally thank you for that, Chip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's been looking for a pen.
Aubrey.
She is, she's in the sand.
She's got to swizzle in.
Toes in the sand, and a drink in her hand.
I don't think she's on the line anymore.
I know.
Give me 20 bits.
If she has a drink in her hand, it's probably not a good one.
Yeah, I know. It's not a good idea. October, I think, October, I think.
September.
Paul, are you sitting there for a moment?
She said September.
Can I steal your pen?
You may.
Tommy and I can sign, and.
I got some crazy colors going.
I've got pencils with duct tape, so kids don't steal my pencils.
That's an extra special pen.
Always.
Yeah, you're fine, Mike.
It's my life. I'm relegated to putting duct tape on my pencils, so no one steals mine.
We used to get.
It's only certain pens I let people borrow. Right, Paul, you know that.
We're gonna have to share that, huh? Yeah. I'm okay with that.
I told Diane we were looking at, I actually didn't tell her that.
So you check the timeline and all of that good stuff?
Yeah. We were told by town council it had to be 35 days. So I think if we go out seven weeks, you know, that should be consistent.
What are we picking a date for?
I believe election warrants go the full week. Am I correct on that? So I think if we were to tentatively schedule it for June 19th, which is a Tuesday, I think, does that sound like a good time period? She can't make the 21st, the 26th.
So you're saying it has to be within 45 days?
No, it has to be posted. No, it has to be posted for a minimum of 35 days.
35 days posted.
Right. And that, you know, a vote to set one, I believe you have up to 90 days to hold an election.
So you have to do it between 36 and 80, 90.
So did I count right?
So that should be clear. That's if we sign it this week, so we'll be expected to come back in.
We're just talking about mathematicians.
To sign it?
To sign it.
Because we've already voted.
Right.
So we just need to come in and sign the warrant.
That's town meeting.
Do you say the 19th?
That's what I would be looking at.
Is it Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine.
The null and mine, because it's not balanced.
June 19th, is that what you said?
Tuesday, June 19th. Do you need an motion for that?
Let me see. Well, yeah, I would.
Voted to set and post an election warrant, so why don't give it an official date?
So I make a motion that we post and set the town election, what is it? Now, I know the date, the town, what was the word? The town election.
Post the election warrant.
Or, and post the election warrant for Tuesday, June 19th, 2018.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 All right. So I think we also have to stamp that. And we have three of these that you have to sign, and she has to notify. Lucky you. Each one goes to each particular agency. So do you want to notify the personnel? Start signing.
Jane has the same pen I do.
Yeah. And as long as it's posted within 40, 48 hours prior.
I think I've done that before.
Oh, you're our campus lending guy?
Just for you, but she'll notify it.
Well, you can just stay on and be the finance committee's representative. We're supposed to have a representative there. Erica was there.
Thanks.
Same name as this. Can I get like a 10 percent rate?
Two times. You get two times enough. But at least we're not charging.
I have six, I have 16 letters in that. They're really, no, I'm not using it. For my own.
One last one. One goes to us, and one goes to Horizon, and one goes to National.
No, that, yeah, it's just, it's just the same pack. We're just signing different versions of the same.
All right, Paul, see you later. See ya.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sticking around. I would have high-tailed it, I guess.
Stick around a little while. Stick around a little while.
I mean, I should have just had you get up and do it, but that's all right. You guys are sitting there on the line. You did? I have a question before you adjourn. Don't adjourn yet. I have a question. We always have a question. I don't know. Can you get through that? Don't trip. I'm telling him, don't trip, and I'm like pulling the wire, I kind of.
Joe, your signature's needed on. So it's on the two maps, the regular, and the fancy small. No, I think she signed that.
Yeah, I got that one.
Lincoln was close, you know, to understand what he wanted, and he hadn't, you know, agreed with the final language. So, you know, let's look at it.
I would skip.
No problem.
You guys, you guys are living it up. Mrs. Jaten.
Still here, right? I told my neighbors it'll be about three hours tonight.
Mrs. Kelly, do you have everything you need?
I think so, because she's just doing it. So I think we're all set.
Erica had a question.
No, I'm all set. I'll hold it for next time, yeah.
For the next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 21st, 2018.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.
You adjourned.